Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our Monday, April 4th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. First of all, let me just make an announcement. We'll be without one of our commissioners tonight. Owen Etheridge is still recovering with some health issues, so he will not be here this evening. If you could keep him in your prayers, please, while he's recovering. At 5:00, we had a work session on some public safety and unified government discussions. And the first, I'll call this meeting into order, and the first item is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And I would ask if Paul O'Neill would be honored to come up and give us the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you that you allow us to live in a country where we can gather together and order our affairs under the freedom that we have, dear Father. And I pray that you would guide these commissioners tonight and give them wisdom and grant them peace in the decisions that they make, dear Father, as they help us to live in a civilized society. And we thank you in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Okay, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
May I approve, Mr. Chairman?
I think we had to add that. That's right. Sorry about that. Under closed session, I'm going to add pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to preserve attorney-client privilege. Thank you.
All right, do we have any other changes to the amendment? Hearing done, can I get a motion for approval? Any second?
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next item is the public comment. This is a time for our citizens to come before this board to speak whatever's on your mind. This board will listen to it intently. No interruptions. You can talk whatever you want to, to the board. We do allow three minutes for that. And when you start, you'll see a green light at the podium up there. And when you see the yellow light come on, it signals that you have about 30 seconds. And I'd ask you if you could try to wrap up your thoughts and comments if you could. And then when the red light comes on, please just finish your statement if you could, and we'll keep moving along. The first person that has signed up this evening is Ms. Willow Kelly. If you could please state your name and address for the records.
Good evening. My name is Willow Kelly, 112 Skipper's Lane, Currituck. My name is Willow Kelly. I'm the CEO of the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. The association now has over 1,200 members in residential and commercial sales, property management, as well as lenders, insurers, appraisers, inspectors, and other affiliate members. The Board of Directors recently approved several initiatives set forth by the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force on Fair Housing and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and that's why I'm here. We would like to present all of you first with a copy of the National Association of Realtors biannual magazine, On Common Ground. This latest issue focuses on addressing the housing shortage and affordable housing issues, issues that we are all familiar with here in Currituck County and Dare County and elsewhere. It's a struggle for us in the Outer Banks area and also eastern North Carolina. I've gotten several calls, actually, just in the last two weeks, from folks that are desperate for long-term rental housing. We'd also like to make you aware that April 11th marks the 54th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. The Outer Banks Association of Realtors is committed to ensuring that all prospective homebuyers, sellers, and tenants are treated fairly and equally without discrimination. To bring further attention to fair housing, we ask that you join us in proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month. And so be it. I have a copy of the Fair Housing Month proclamation that I emailed to LeAnn for your perusal later. But just to acknowledge that you declare the month of April 22, 2022, as Fair Housing Month, and the county of Currituck has an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and those prospective residents of Currituck County. And I'm going to leave the magazines right here, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Next I have is John Montgomery.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, good evening. My name's John Montgomery. My wife, Maureen, we're at 145 Clamshell Trail in Southern Shores. We're the owners and operators of Outer Banks Jeep Rentals. We've sent you all a letter. Not going to add a whole lot to that, but we wanted to come personally tonight because this is obviously very important to us. It's important to our business, and we think that it should be important to Currituck County. You market Jeeps on the beach in your own marketing. We provide that service. When you go to visitcurrituck.com, what you see is a Jeep driving on the beach. I heard somebody mention the North Carolina game. There was an ad for Currituck County, showed wild horses, and it showed Jeeps driving on the beach. We provide that service to Currituck County visitors. We need to be able to make a living if we're going to continue to provide that service. The proposed changes in access to the 4x4 area throw that into considerable doubt. We need to plan. We need to purchase new vehicles. We need to sign our lease. We need to make other investments in order to be a viable business. We're not able to do that under the regulatory uncertainty that would be created by the proposed changes and the changes that you've indicated that you're planning for next year. So one of the things that we wanted to highlight is the fact that, assuming that you're going to continue to allow some public access to the 4x4 area, that rental Jeeps are the way that is in your best interest to do so. We actively screen all of our drivers. They all have a credit card. They all have insurance. They all have, we have their address, everything that you would presumably need to know about a driver if some incident were to happen up there. I don't think you get that with most of the folks that visit. We employ GPS trackers on our Jeep, to make sure, on all of our Jeeps, to make sure that they're not going into areas that they shouldn't be going in. We give them a thorough discussion of beach driving rules, how to do it, how to act around horses, act around people. We think that we are among the safest and most responsible ways that people can access that beach. We provide vehicles that are not going to get stuck, that are in good operating condition. We spend thousands and thousands of dollars a year to make sure that those Jeeps are in good working order. Those are the main points that we want to make. The other point that I'd like to make is that governments make concessions to commercial enterprises all the time in order to access public goods where there's limited, you know, it's a valued, limited value, you know, like Currituck Beach, right? The 4x4 beach, you can only send so many people up there. We absolutely support trying to manage the number of vehicles there. This year, certainly overcrowded. It's not good for us, not good for the beach experience, probably not good for Currituck. But we think we can be part of the solution. Because if you can figure out some concession so that we can operate and we have some degree of regulatory stability for some period, then we can decide whether or not we can operate in that environment, whether we can make a profit, whether we can continue to provide that service. And importantly, it's not simply driving on, you know, day trippers that come and rent from us and drive up and see the horses and drive back. We have a lot of Currituck visitors that do not own, yes, sir?
I was just going to say, could you hurry up? I just, oh, if my, yes, yes. Just if you could finish your thought.
Sorry, that went fast. Okay. You have our letter. We appreciate your attention.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have anybody else signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that showed up late, didn't get a chance to sign up for public comment that would like to speak at the public comment session? Okay, seeing now, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting. And our next item is our Commissioner's report. And I'm going to start off to my right this evening with Commissioner McCord.
First off, I was in Raleigh last week, all week, for training. And I was very thankful to be back home Friday evening due to the traffic. And like, we see people complain on social media about the different stuff that we deal with, but thank God for where we live. I know Tolles Creek Road was tough with the state having to, with Barn Hill paving the road. Now that's been paved, now we'll get complaints for people going too fast, probably on the paved road. I've already seen it. But like I said, like, I'm very thankful to where we live. Like I said, I was in Raleigh, and man, you can have that place. I know it's our capital. The fire departments in Moyoc, this weekend I attended, they did an Easter egg hunt for kids, and they had different vendors out there. Our fire departments, volunteers, as well as our paid guys and gals, EMTs and everything, public service, they do an awesome job. That was a great event. There were so many people there. Something maybe on the restrooms, we could do a little better, not trying to gig them, but they did an awesome job. I know Currituck Kids had one at the old Maple Park. There was, I mean, it was well, I mean, like I said, people are glad to be out going and about and doing things. Like you said, there's a lot of great things that happen here in the county and go on, not just don't believe everything on the Moyoc page on the complaining. But I want to recognize, too, two of our officers, like I said, with the fire guys, two of our sergeants today, I was actually late, I missed the work session due to the Sheriff's Department. What we were dealing with was a homicide suspect out of Chesapeake. But two of our sergeants today did a phenomenal, multiple guys did a great job. But I do want to recognize these two. We didn't throw the towel in and give up. One of our sergeants stayed at the Welcome Center and sat there for hours after hours after hours and spotted the vehicle come back into Currituck. And had it not been for the dedication of Sergeant Mike Corbell, you know, we might not have, you know, that vehicle, I mean, he probably would eventually would have been caught, but he did an awesome job. And Sergeant Jesse Taylor, who is also our SWAT commander, did a phenomenal job. Nobody got hurt, no shots were fired, none of that kind of stuff. The guys did a takedown on Pointer Road. There'll probably be some complaints on Pointer Road for the traffic being, you know, why was there 12 deputies and 10 Chesapeake cops on the side of the road? But like I said, they were taking a homicide suspect into custody. The guys did an awesome job. Like, mainly where I'm going at is, we live in a good place, and, you know, like you said, just don't believe everything you read on social media because it's not always true. So I'm thankful to work here, live here, and spend my money here. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner McCord. And next, Vice Chairman Paul Bum.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing this evening.
All right, just to, I'll piggyback on the Easter event, yep. I mean, I've been on Currituck Kids Board since 2009, and every year we try to do something for the community and the kids. Because that's an important part of our community, the youth in our, and seeing the people that show up and the volunteers we get to, to help stuff the eggs, get them out there. We have high school volunteers. It's just, it's phenomenal. But there's a lot going on, so this weekend was pretty busy to try to be at everything. But if you can get involved with those organizations, they're, I mean, it's, it does a lot for you and the community. Secondly, the fire departments, we're still having a lot of structured fires out there. We've had one over the weekend, we've had, I mean, we've had mutual aid calls in, the wrecks, we've had fatalities on the highways. If you can get involved with your fire departments, any matter, I mean, they'll take you to help, you know, with cars going by, setting up, getting, bringing water, anything you can do with the volunteers, they'd appreciate your support out there. It's a tough job, going through the training and just being on call all the time. You can call it out in the middle of the night, whatever, but it's rewarding if you can get involved with that as well, too. So just remind them, the first responders, the police department, everybody out there is getting busy, seasoned, they're getting ready to pave the roads here soon. So be careful out there, and I hope everybody has a safe Easter holiday. And that's all I have. Commissioner White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not much this evening. Just wanted to say thanks to the Sheriff's Department, Kevin, you know, for all you guys do for the county at this time when we have people, pretty much demeaning, calling to end police funding. We kind of went the other way and put more money out, and just want to say thanks to you guys for all your work. And, you know, you have to sign off coming here and do this job, and then sign back on at zero dark thirty again. So thank you to you and all the deputies for all the work you do. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner White, and Commissioner Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend Visit NC 365 Conference in Durham with Currituck Director Tourism, Tamara Cougar, some of her staff, and an advisory board meeting. Also in attendance was our General Assembly Representative Bobby Hannick, who serves on the State Tourism Committee. This conference brings together leaders for the state travel industry and provides opportunities to gain expert insight on the latest trend. And you might be asking yourself, why is tourism so important to North Carolina and Currituck County? Because for every dollar that's spent in tourism, there is a return of $32 for the citizens of North Carolina. Where I come from, that's a pretty good return on your investment. Also at the conference, they stated that out of the 50 states, North Carolina ranks number five in tourism, which really surprised me. Number five out of 50 is a pretty good number, too. So with the tourism season starting to begin, please remember to be welcoming to the tourists that come to our county, because they do contribute to make it a wonderful life for us to live here in the county. Also, this past Saturday, I attended the Currituck County Extension Environmental Farm and Household Hazard Waste Disposal Day. That's a mouthful. There was loads of educational resources available to, available to attendees, plus you were able to get rid of old documents and old chemicals that you might have stored in your house. And I was really happy to take advantage of that. Folks, there's programs for kids and adults going on all the time at the corporate extension office. So check out their website and get involved. It's a wonderful resource here in our county, and our citizens need to take more advantage of this. Also, on Saturday, I attended the Currituck Kids Easter Egg Hunt. I think they had 10,000 eggs, they said, and it was fun watching the kids run around and visit with the Easter Bunny. But I guess the highlight for me was seeing the JP NAP and the Currituck County High School students volunteering their time. And so it's wonderful to see the youth in our communities doing things like that, and I'd like to give them a big thank you. But last but not least, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. During the National Child Prevention Awareness Month, please join efforts to help individuals and organizations in our community strengthen their families and prevent child abuse and neglect. And I, too, would like to wish our county commissioner, Owen Etheridge, a speedy recovery. He's certainly missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Kitty, how come you didn't take batting practice at the Durham Bulls place like Bobby Hannick did?
Let me tell you what I did. Bobby wanted us all to do the wave, so Kitty started it and didn't realize that her seat could have come off.
Oh, my goodness.
But I got up.
There you go.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge, and Commissioner Jarvis.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to be approving a slate of citizens for advisory boards throughout the county. A lot of those people we are approving are going to be serving their third term. And as a board, we have decided that three terms is the allowable amount. So we're going to need people to volunteer, to step up, to fill these positions, and I invite you to get ahead of that. Go to the website and look at the many opportunities to be part of this county, to learn and get your feet wet into what the county does and how you can bring your knowledge to one of these advisory boards. Also, I'd like to wish Owen Etheridge a speedy recovery as well. He's been in our thoughts, our prayers, and he is missed. And finally, with so many of the world events going on this week, from Ukraine to mass shootings, there's a lot of meanness in the world today. And I just ask that you be the kind, nice person that others want to be like in the mean world. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. And our next item is our county manager attorney report.
Just following up on Commissioner Etheridge's report, Public Works did sponsor the Environmental Day this past weekend. Last year, we had 32 cars that brought 3,500 pounds of paper to be shredded. This year, we had 78 cars who had 9,600 pounds of paper shredded. And we've not yet received the numbers, but the collector of the hazardous waste said it was the most hazardous waste he'd ever collected at a Currituck event.
It was busy. I guess it was very busy.
That's almost true.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. Mr. McCrea, could you give an update on the progress of the crossovers, please?
Yes, the county currently has under contract the replacement of three crossovers in Wellhead subdivision, Dune Crossovers. One is Dolphin, Carl, and Mackerel will be the three streets where the new crossovers will be put into place. Dolphin has been completely removed and is now, I believe, under construction. There was some delay in that the contractor was having trouble getting 35, pilings 35 feet in length. He now has the material. Understand that Carl is now being demolished and will follow, he would then soon be following with, with construction of that walkover, and then the last one will be Mackerel.
And they thought they could get this done before the...
No, they're not going to be all complete before the season starts, no.
Do you want them to be complete before the season starts?
I think Dolphins pilings are going in.
They should go pretty quick.
At least it's sand.
He has, I think it's 120 days to complete the contract.
It's going to be a bit of congestion, you're right. Okay, that, okay, that takes care of all the reports. Well, the next is our administrative reports, and I believe this evening we have the YMCA presenting their annual report for the state of the Y.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. My name's Dean Maddox, and I serve as the District Vice President for the YMCA South land Roads, including your Currituck County YMCA. And I want to share just a couple of things, and I'll turn it over to your executive DJ in just a minute. First off, I want to just talk about how I'm excited about Currituck County, how I'm excited about the campus, how I'm excited about the partnerships, and then some personal observations. That should all take about two and a half minutes, so we won't belabor the point. I don't want to steal DJ's thunder. Just, just a few opening remarks. COVID has impacted the YMCA Southland Roads as it has many businesses in our region. The YMCA Southland Roads lost about $20 million a year because of COVID. Our memberships dropped to about 60 to 50% what they were prior to COVID. Now, we're seeing some encouraging signs, and particularly here in Currituck County as well, but I just want to frame it just sort of in that, in that context. While I'm excited about Currituck County, my goodness, the growth that I see just driving down once to twice a week across the border is incredible. Just really excited about that. For some reason, when I cross over the line into Virginia, home prices go up like $200, $300,000. I'm not quite sure why. So I keep referring my colleagues down to Currituck County, and actually, two of them have purchased homes and relocated to this fine county. So I'm so excited about the growth that we see in Currituck County, and refer my friends. The campus, I just, I'm so excited about the growth that we're seeing in the campus, just the different elements that are being added, the long-term vision. I see families out there, walking on the walking paths. I see, I see, I was there a couple of weeks ago, and I saw a number of law enforcement vehicles, and they were working out in your YMCA. And they were talking, and they were laughing, recharging, staying fit. I just really, I just really commend your leadership and your foresight in that campus and the vision that you brought forward there. So great, great, great things to come there. The partnerships, I just talked about Cameron, the Walker Extension, Jason with Parks and Rec, Stacy with the Senior Center, continue to be just gems to partner with and work with, with great attitudes, and we just really are excited about that. And then just some personal observations. I just, I just continue to see the community come together at your Currituck YMCA. There are just a limited number of places in the county where you can come together as a community, as a family, and I see that more and more at your YMCA. So I commend, again, your, your leadership and your vision, and I'm bringing that all about, and I don't want to steal too much of DJ's thunder, so I'm going to turn it over to him. We'll ask some questions at the end. Okay, DJ?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time here. I'm excited to be here. My name is DJ Kopesi. I originally hail from New Jersey. I decided to move down here, move my family as well, relocate to the Currituck County area, and I'm just excited for, for that opportunity. I bring a little over 10 years of public, private, nonprofit sector experience to this YMCA and to your YMCA and to this community to help it grow and recover from what we had suffered through COVID. Just to kind of piggyback off of what Dean had said about community coming together, a few of our board members have decided to attend with us tonight. And that's really what it's all about, is the community coming together. And they work side by side with me to create the best possible Y experience we can. So I do thank you all for coming out here tonight, making some of your busy schedules. With that, moving forward to where we were, Dean had mentioned it, that the Y as a whole, we've lost about $20 million a year. Our Y in particular, we got down to about 860 units, which before that, we were at about 1,450. So we lost 600, you know, approximately 600 units at the Currituck Y. And as many of you know, that's, that's jobs, that's services to the community, and that was hard. But I am proud to report that we are in a state of recovery, and we're recovering strong. Currently, we finished the month of March at 1,201 units for our Y, which is 83% to our February 2018 units goal, units output, excuse me. And that just shows growth, and people love this Y. It's a beautiful facility. The investment that was made is compared to no other Y I've ever been in across this country. And I've been to Ys in Houston, DC, Jersey, Pennsylvania. It's just the most beautiful Y I've ever been into. And our goal, we still have a goal to reach. Our goal is 1,505 units, set by our board chair, Mr. Paul O'Neill, and adopted by the rest of the board as well. And we're going to get there just by doing two things, listening and serving. We're going to listen to the community, listen to what our members want, and we're going to serve them. And in your packets tonight that I provided, you can just see a couple of examples of how we're listening and how we're serving. People wanted more group exercise classes in the evening to meet their busy schedules. And I'm proud to announce that we're offering between 45 and 50 classes per week at our Y, most of them being in the evening time as well. We've expanded hours in our pool. People love the pool. I know it's small, but people do love their pool. Extended stay and play hours, we have to be accommodating, we have to eliminate any barriers for childcare, for people to live healthy lives. And so we've looked into that, we've done that as well. And just in closing, we just want to continue to be partners. And Dean had said Jason has been amazing, Stacy's been amazing, Cooperative Extension, I look forward to the partnership we're going to build there to just continue to serve and be partners in this community and partners in youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. Any questions?
I would just like to say one thing that I'm appreciative for the 24-hour, where you can pay to have the 24-hour. My youngest son literally attends the Y 29 to 30 days a month. I mean, he does not, like, literally miss a day, and if it wasn't for that, he would miss. So like I said, we're getting, my family, we're getting our money's worth, not on my end, but on his. At least somebody's using it. But that was a great program, and I'm glad that you all put that into play.
Fantastic, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions, and we're probably not going to get the answers here, but I'm going to go ahead and ask it anyway.
Sure.
A couple of the concerns, critiques, or whatever, that I've, that I personally have seen and/or have heard about from others. Because you're now entering into the camp season. What the camp season means to those of us in Currituck County who helped build that facility means very limited access to the gymnasium that we ultimately helped pay for, or, you know, and as members of the Y, we're precluded from using, because the camps are in there all day long. all day long. And so that's something that, I don't know what the schedules are. I don't know if there's a free time available, especially in the summer. You're looking at a lot of kids in the middle school, elementary school, and high school age groups that would like to benefit from their family's membership with the ability to improve their athletic skills in anticipation of the school seasons coming up. Specifically, volleyball will be something that I would use as an example. If the Parks and Rec aren't open, there is, you know, there's very difficult, if not impossible, to be able to practice in the YMCA. The second thing has to do with the pool. And I understand COVID. I understand the restriction of certified lifeguards, et cetera, et cetera. But there were actually periods of time coming out of COVID where, again, the camps, and I understand that that's a service to the community, but if you weren't in camp, you weren't going to be able to swim, except for very limited opportunities to do that. And at the time, the reasoning was lack of personnel. And I know that you all were struggling with management. Folks, you know, I had a conversation with a couple of folks working there that was basically people left or people, you know, had not come back. And so consequently, people were putting on multiple hats. So, you know, the Y is probably no different than every other industry or business out there. I think, I don't know anybody that is 100% staffed. And clearly, the YMCA is probably no different than that. But, you know, there are folks that pay their monthly, you know, fee and feel that they're precluded from using a facility that they helped pay for. So, anyway, I don't know, you know, I'm not expecting any answer tonight. But I think if there are openings, or there are options, or there's opportunities for expanding use of the facilities within the county to those that aren't going to your camps, certainly, I don't know that that's being well communicated to the community. So if you could just take that for consideration, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, Commissioner Bumatt. And we have looked over all of those. We've evaluated, myself along with our camp director, have evaluated all of those, all of those concerns. Because we did get those verbatims and surveys, that limited outdoor pool hours, as well as cramped gyms or inaccessible gyms. That's not what the Y is for. We're for all. So we have evaluated that. We've expanded the outdoor pool hours. We are going to be open from 10:00 AM until 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. Camp will swim in a designated time, and we will educate the members in the community every way that we can so that they are aware that camp will come in here in smaller groups, so it's not such an overcrowded, controlled chaos, if you will. And then with the gym as well...
Caddyshack comes to mind.
Okay, fair assessment. And then even with the gym, we do have designated teen times Monday, Wednesday, Friday evenings currently, and those will extend through the summertime hours as well. Because we do want to service children, not just kids who go to camp, but then also our teenagers as well and our young adults. You're welcome, sir.
I'll just make a comment. I know you and I had a conversation a while back regarding Currituck Kids. And Currituck Kids has always been a big supporter for the Y, especially with summer camps, and kind of a mutual agreement with volunteers and getting things done. I know the president of Currituck Kids had mentioned to me, and I told him I'd bring it up, about the, they've been trying to reach somebody, they haven't gotten a response back, and they're not sure who to contact. But they'd like to know if the Y is still looking to work with volunteer, you know, nonprofits out there, and who the contacts are for that. And Melissa Reynolds is the president, and if somebody could probably reach out to her and update her to what's, you know, what the status is. And as far as camps go, because I know the Currituck Kids, right now, we're discussing funding for camps, because we always provide some monies to send kids to the camps. Currituck Kids, that's one of the things they do in the summertimes. So I'm not sure what your plans are for the camps this summer. I know the sheriff's has their camps in some other places in the summertime.
I know we had this year due to staffing shortages, which I believe they're going to put on the county websites, like our summer camps. I believe we're only going to have two. I think we used to have eight, seven or eight. I believe we're only going to be able to have two, just because our SROs who run those camps are going to have to assist with work and patrol this summer on the roads, because it's going to be busy.
But if the plan is to have, you know, some camps for the kids this summer there, maybe somebody reach out to the Currituck Kids so they can kind of plan accordingly with the funding, when you would need that, and how much, and how many camps, how many kids, and all that. Because I think they're anxious to...
Absolutely, sir. I will do that. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions on the board? If not, we thank you for coming out this evening. We appreciate the update.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the old business. It's the second reading. It's consideration of ordinance amendment to modify beach parking permit regulations and require an ATV permit to operate a UTV side-by-side on the Currituck County off-road area. And I believe we'll turn this over to our county manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this ordinance is before you for a second reading. That is because under North Carolina law, an ordinance, in order to be adopted, as its first reading, must receive a unanimous vote. And of course, because of a couple of Commissioners' absences, that unanimous vote could not occur. However, the ordinance did pass by a simple majority. Tonight is now back to you, as required by law, for a second reading and may be adopted by a simple majority of the board tonight. The ordinance begins on page 16 of your agenda package, and I'll just touch the highlights and the substantive changes of the ordinance. First, going on to page 17 in your agenda package, one of the modifications is at line 17 on that page, that there would not be the utility terrain vehicles or side-by-side vehicles will not be allowed for operation on the Currituck County beaches. The next substantive change is on line 22 of page 17, where we now are requiring a parking permit on the North Beach from the last Saturday in April to the first Saturday in October before the ordinance provided from Friday before Memorial Day to 11:59 PM on Labor Day. And then the next substantive change is, begins on page 17, line 40, in which it provides, "A county residence and non-resident property owners shall prominently display a county-issued and designated user parking permit at all times when operating a motor vehicle, other than moped, motorcycle, or ORV on the area covered by this section." This is to recognize that county residents and non-resident property owners have received or are eligible to receive a decal to be placed in their windshield. That decal acts as their permit allowing use of county convenience centers. It also acts as their re-entry permit following storm events. And then lastly, it will be recognized under this ordinance as the parking permit for those persons. Those are the substantive changes to the ordinance. The rest of the changes are just to clarify and make editorial changes regarding the types of permits that are required, changing permit to user permits, which these are, or to user beach parking permits, depending upon the context contained in the ordinance. Now, what has changed, but not with this ordinance, it is by your separate action of adopting the county's fee schedule at your last meeting. The board had directed staff to provide a program under which there would be no more than 300 beach parking permits issued per week from the last Saturday in April until the first Saturday in October for persons other than county residents, county property owners, or for those persons renting units on the North Beach. The program, in essence, is not changing, except we will no longer, from what we've experienced the last few summers, except we will no longer allow, under so far, the fee schedule that's been adopted, a seasonal permit option or a 10-day permit option. It will be strictly a seven-day permit option, Saturday to Saturday. Also, what's going to change is no longer will an individual have to come to a county visitor center and make application and receive a parking, beach parking permit at that time. We have now an online method of acquiring these permits, which, assuming the adoption of this ordinance tonight, will go live first thing in the morning. That process will allow persons to go onto that site to make a reservation for a beach parking permit for the week that they choose, or any number of weeks that they might choose, and to pay a $50 fee in order to receive, in essence, a reservation ticket with a QR code. They will then, when they want to actually receive a physical permit, go to the Corolla Visitor Center, where they will exchange that reservation ticket they've received from their online registration. They'll receive a hard copy of a permit that will be valid for that week period that they have reserved. Other than that, we believe this summer, the program will operate the same, except again, with the reduction in the number of beach parking permits that are issued to the public at large, in essence. And that now is the online process, is how an individual will reserve and then acquire their parking permit.
So, to clarification, right now, the way it's going to be is anybody can drive on the beach as many times. You could have 1,000 people a day or whatever, driving. You just can't stop.
There's nothing prohibiting anyone from driving on the North Beach.
And the citizens of Currituck County and the property owners can go there as many times as they want to, and every day if they want to, and park. There's no special, they have to purchase anything.
And with the decal that has been issued to them for their convenience center use and their re-entry permit, they may park on the beach and recreate.
And this is just strictly for day trippers, limiting to 300, that's all?
The user beach parking permit is required for any person other than a county resident or non-resident property owner who should have received their decal or are eligible to receive one from the county. Those persons who are renting houses on the North Beach, their property management company or the person from whom they're renting the house should, will be provided permits to leave there in the house or provide for their use during their stay, so they may come out onto the beach and park. But again, there's nothing that prohibits anyone from coming onto the beach and driving north, south, east.
East.
Well, yeah, east or west. But for them to go see the horses or see this unique area, whatever they want to do, they just would not, without a permit, be allowed to park.
Sir, I just want to talk about this a little bit more, because after talking with Commissioner McCord, he had some concerns we talked about earlier in the week. And I spoke to the property management, Clark Twitty, for instance, and they were very supportive of this. And I then spoke with the county attorney or county manager about it. He's already worked out details with the county staff on these rental properties. And one of your concern was, if you show up and there's no pass there, what do you do? Well, we're working out to make it pretty much painless for the property management companies to have those permits.
Include.
So, yeah, so they're, so if you own a rental property up there, not only do you get your orange sticker, right, but you get these passes to use at the home itself for your renters. And so, well, now that there's no longer a fee associated with these annual permits and stuff, which makes it a lot easier for us to say, here's some, here's permits, they can come get another one easily to replace it, because they do walk away, you know, Saturday or Sunday, whatever day they check out. So, the goal is to make their life as painless as possible, and the renter, so that the person that's coming here, that's our guest in this county, has a pleasurable experience and doesn't have any headaches, you know, with trying to go to the visitor center to get a pass, to get a replacement pass or do that. Other than if they're staying outside the 4x4 area, they have to plan in advance for their vacation and book that now. So I know people are watching this now. If you are planning for your vacation, and you normally like to go to that beach, you can go on the website and pre-book that, you know, months out, ahead of time for your week while you're here, so that you don't have to worry about it when you get here. Just come in, show the email to the county staff. Here's your hanger. Goodbye.
No, we talked about, too, I know we talked about, now let me ask this, like, far as the fine, is that going to be part? I didn't see that in there, where far as the, if there's a county ordinance violation, far as, I know we discussed going from 50 to 75, we've already ordered the books for it.
The general provision for enforcement in the county's ordinances in Chapter 1 allows for a civil citation up to, not to exceed $500. So it's already covered.
Okay. I didn't know that was part.
You just need to write them.
Yeah, and the other, yeah, and just like if, and just, well, I'm not going to name, like, that plant is a family, and they go out there and park, they don't have a pass, whatever, like, there is a charge on the civil citation where, you know, somebody, and I've wrote them, as that'd be plenty of times, you know, we'd educate them, hey, you need to get a pass, go get a pass. Sometimes they would refuse, and then we just would give them a ticket. So, like I said, so that is an option where they can, you know, if they don't have a pass, they're going to get a civil citation for failure to have a pass, which is a fine.
Well, and certainly, you know, officers use their discretion to determine, you know, whether someone might be agreeable to leaving the beach because they don't have a pass.
That's what they usually do. I mean, and it's usually Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And then by Tuesday, you know, when the guy's set up and they ride all the way down to the north, to the 24, it's crazy, because like, all the passes are there.
Well, hopefully, there'll be a lot less passes. And then again, make your lives a little bit easier. That, you know, at the end of the day, this is about not only public safety, but the visitor experience here, the county residents increasing, you know, their enjoyment of their beaches. So that's really the goal, is to have a safer, better experience for everyone.
And the county's not seeking to raise revenue by writing civil citations. We would like people to comply with the county's ordinances, and again, have a safe and enjoyable experience on the North Beach.
And like I said, that was the main reason why. I know we discussed that at the work session on it, for as, you know, you write somebody a fine for speeding, and they were out there being reckless or doing something, you know. And we write state citations, too.
Yes.
So, I mean, like I said, I know there was, you know, you would get the comment of, you know, oh, that's it. I mean, just, I'll be honest.
That's the minimum. It's up to...
500, Kevin.
Yeah, so we could, yeah, we can, we can change that. We, I mean, and the main thing in that is, like you said, not, you know, I want to write somebody a ticket, but I want to make sure kids are safe. I want to make sure somebody's animal's not hit by somebody driving a vehicle or whatever. So it's kind of, it's all for public safety and the enjoyment of the beach.
That's correct.
Any other questions regarding this?
I just have a couple of comments that I wrote in here. I'll be one of the guys out there some this summer, probably enforcing. I just worry, I mean, perfect example, this couple that, you know, far as, you know, affecting their business. And I'm not, not against...
Not stopping anybody from driving.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, they can drive all day long. I'm not against it. I just, like I said, and I know me and Bob, we talked for numerous times about it, just, it's a lot of changes, not really a lot of change, it's a lot of change quickly. You know, and like I said, I kind of like the annual pass idea. I know that's now gone. The, we get that call every week, the UTV. That one's going to be hard to enforce. I drive, I'm from Ohio. I come down here with a UTV on a trailer that has insurance, that has a license plate, turn signals, the works. They're going to go in there, if they book two passes and order their passes, that guy with that Ohio tag, just using that as an example, shows out there on the beach, just the enforcement on that, you know.
That's going to be a problem.
It's good, that's going to be a problem. And it's not going to be, I mean, and I'm all for them not being out there, you know, far as if they're not local, so forth and so on. Not that I'm against somebody having a good time, but they're going to reserve their pass online, and they can have a Chevy 1500 full-wheel drive, and they're planning on slapping it on that UTV, you know, that's got license. That one's, the enforcement on that, I just see that being, you know, or they're going to see, Selena's out there, she's a resident, she's living it up on the beach and has her UTV, just, I mean, hey, they got one.
It's pretty, it's pink.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it just, that part of it, I just see more, you know, there's parts of it, it's going to be less. And I'm all for everybody having an enjoyable time. I'm all for everybody having a safe time. That's, you know, while we work it to enforce to make sure nobody's out there driving impaired or going, I've seen them going 55 miles an hour in the soft sand, you know, tearing the vehicles up, probably tearing some of, hopefully not some of his rental Jeeps. But like I said, those are just my concerns, where we've talked about it. You know, they're going to manipulate, I mean, but they're going to manipulate it anyway. They're going to manipulate...
What do you think of that? What do you suggest?
The deputies are going to take, I mean, which, I mean, we train for it, I guess, we're going to take a cussing on that UTV when that guy from Ohio has the plate and the insurance, because they can literally drive it anywhere. I mean, like I said, when they have it. And I know me and the county manager slash attorney, I, you know, he showed me the literature from '85 where the General Assembly said we could limit this and that. I just, you know, and it's small potatoes. And it, I mean, those are the ones that go out there, I hate to say that, and I'm not saying it's the locals, but it's somebody out there from, you know, somewhere else. Those things are fun to ride, and you kind of want to have fun with them, and...
That's the biggest concern. That's the biggest concern.
That's.
That's why I brought that forward, that changed forward.
It is a lot of, where we talked about it, so there's a lot of headaches.
And that's why, one of the driving forces of getting rid of ATV tours was the problems with ATVs in general and then, and then limiting it to county residents. And so, this is furthering that, you know, that, that started, what, 15 years ago probably got rid of ATVs?
And I, I guess I actually would submit that, that because of the way we define, we, we defined collectively these types of things as off-road vehicles that really this side-by-side UTV would not permit it anyway.
Right, it's just a new animal to deal with that's caused.
Well, and the other thing is too, like you said, I say I own a home in Croweville, which I don't, but I own a home in Croweville and I can get my pass for that if, and we've taken some of those too, where they've been fraudulent and, you know, used somebody's pass, they weren't supposed to do that, they got tickets and then they, and that's one thing the county does well, like, if somebody local violates it or abuses it, they lose it. So, I mean, that solves that problem too. I just, I just know, A, I've worked out there, it's, it's, it can be brutal in the summer, you, you pulled up when I was out there, you know, assisting somebody, you know, and I, I mean, if you tell me to do 100 things, I'll do 100 things, but it's, it's just going to be hard for some of the guys, the UTV one is going to be, because we've had in the month of March, I want to say seven or eight public service calls to Corolla asking that question. And whenever I see it popped up, I was like, tell them, no, you know, type into that supervisor.
I think that's important too, for tourism to be involved in their, in our messaging to get it out.
To educate, because people are going to bring them down and when they can't use them, they're going to be mad.
They can bring them here, it's not, you know, go to Busco Beach if you want to go to the beach. But, and that, that's going to be, that's going to be a problem. I mean, there's just no two ways about it and it, and it continues to be, it has been, because they're still bringing them down here thinking they can do it, I mean, just, just now, this is a regular.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to continue to be a problem and.
Those were just my main, like I said, me and Bob talked about a bunch of it multiple times, those are my main things where I can just see, which, like I said, if there's 15 rules, you know, we'll enforce 15 rules. I just know the, a couple of those are going to be.
It's going to be hard.
Some, some nice cussings that you're going to receive from somebody that spent 20 grand for a home or 10 grand and now I can't drive this, that has a tag, it has insurance, it has blinkers, you know, it has all that stuff, that one's, I'm, I've.
So, it's like Bob said, it all boils down to we've got to educate them before they get here.
I agree.
And it's, 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 yeah, it's, tourism is good at pushing messaging, working with, you know, our partners in tourism to get that message out to, to their, to their renters, their clients, their, their customers. And they meet with them pretty regularly, about quarterly, I believe Tamara said, just to talk over the changes that are coming, things that are going down, what does tourism look like, what are, I mean, all those things that are wrapped up into it. So, so I'm sure Tamara and her staff will do a commendable job of trying to get the information out through press releases, et cetera.
And you did see why the rental companies want to work too, you know, so.
They, and they, then, you know, and talking to, to.
Brenly was the same, were they?
Yeah, they, they're very, they're, they're on board with it, I mean, and they, and their customers are going to be some of the ones that are affected because they'll show up with their side-by-side as well. And they, they, they recognize not only that, but the fragility of the area, you know, that's the other thing we're trying to preserve is, you know, it's, it's a very fragile, it's a fragile ecosystem, so, you know, tread lightly.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, then the board needs to take action on this in the form of a motion.
I'm going to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion on the second, Chris Heath, is there any further discussion on this? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes.
Sorry, Bob.
It's okay.
Motion passes.
We're, we're, we do not live in a world where everything is, is black and white, so.
We hired almost all out.
That's fine, okay, moving on to new business. The first item on our new business is consideration of consultant recommendation for public-private partnership. I believe I agree, you have this again.
Yes, the board has been talking for some time about what's the best way to proceed with redevelopment, reconstruction of the Moyoc Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant. The board, after a lot of discussion, decided that the public-private partnership might be the best route to go in order to rebuild our facility and maybe hopefully at a more cost-effective way for the county and for its ultimate ratepayers. And so, as, as recommended by county staff, you directed that we seek proposals from owner consultants to help us start this process, which among other things will be to evaluate our plant, our proposal, whether it makes sense for us to go forward with a public-private partnership and in what form the public-private partnership might look. There is a, as I said in the agenda summary page, there was a team of, of county employees, me, assistant, my assistant Rebecca Gay, Finance Officer Sandra Hill, Assistant Finance Officer Karen Kraus, and County Engineer Eric Weatherly scored four proposals that we received. We are proposing to you as the top score, Project Finance Advisory Limited, or PFAL, as a consultant that the county retain. As included in your agenda package, there is a, they set out the different phases in this, in the first part of their programming that will take 14 weeks at $176,198 to proceed on that portion. What we expect to receive from that is again, their analysis and analysis and evaluation as to whether public-private partnership makes sense for the county to proceed with the reconstruction of the Moyoc wastewater plant and if so, in what form that public-private partnership might look.
And that doesn't include, then recruitment, we will be, if they decide all that, what happens after that? We say, okay, we found what we want to do, the PPP three.
We then move into another phase where they will be assisting us with the development of requests for proposals from potential partners, help us to evaluate the proposals that we receive and then help us to create and negotiate contracts necessary to move forward with that program.
Just looking at it, I noticed they said they had worked with New Hanover, Wake County, and the city of Greensboro. Have y'all spoken with people?
No, we have not spoken with them.
So, I, I have their score, but it, does cost factor into their score at all?
Cost did not factor into the scoring.
Okay, do we know what numbers two, three, and four, or previously, we would get all of the bidders, their scores and what their prices are and, you know, and we understand best value and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, depending on what the, the reduction in score and what that potential reduction in cost might be, I think would be important to know. And then the other thing I looked at in their proposal, it's on page 73 for what it's worth, they have blended rates that do not make sense to me because you typically have significant, you have more labor categories under that blended rate than at that blended rate. And the only way you can get to the higher dollar number is if the higher-priced individuals are doing the work. Looking at their credentials of this team, I, I don't know that I've ever seen a, a team assembled with the quals that, that these folks have from an engineering, from a legal, from a financial, I mean, I would suggest to you, they are pretty amazing, but I think we're looking at a price that reflects that as well. So, you know, not to, I, I know it's a very important decision in the county, but I'm curious as to the methodology, as to how they got to that blended rate would be number one and number two, and if you've got it, that's fine. What the other companies, what their scores were and what their prices were, you know, I.
We do have the scores, I believe we do have their prices, do we not?
But is that something that you want to just email the board then so we can review all that information and maybe at the next meeting?
I mean, this is a 94-page proposal.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
And it, it like, looked like my resume.
Yeah.
Okay, close.
It was, it was very thorough and thus the score they received.
It is, it is probably one of the most complete proposal responses this county has ever seen. I mean, I, I may be wrong, but from, for what they're offering, and I don't think Cadillac is the right label, I, I think it's something a little further north of that.
With the rest of.
Sorry.
With the rest of the.
Yes, of course.
Well, would the rest of the board like that information to review before we make a decision on this?
I just want to say, I was very impressed with how much research they had done, especially when they laid out their three procurement options, that's on page 60. They have obviously watched board meetings, they've gone through and looked at the, the minutes for, I mean, they, they know what our qualms are and I was, I was very impressed by that. So, I know the county manager was saying that, you know, some of them came in and said, this is what you'll do and kind of, you know, but this group is like they're going to give us a menu.
Right.
And I think that, yeah, the price tag is shocking, but if it saves us from what we may be looking at $15 million.
You're, you're absolutely spot on and correct.
That's the reason why we decided to do this.
This is, yeah, and this level of analysis is superb.
Perfect.
Their resume for the thing, like you said, I just kept scrolling when I was looking at it.
Going and going and going.
I was like, the same guy.
So, Selena, then, then are you prepared then to act on this tonight then? Are you good?
I mean, I trust, we, we have, we have put faith in our county manager and our staff and I believe that they've gone through these, I, I can't, I, I don't think that, you know, I don't think that we're going to find a, a better group to help us go through this process that is uncharted for the county. We, you know, we've never ventured into this P3 and I think that they are going to help us find out if this is the right fit for us. So, yes, I, I'm prepared.
Kitty?
I'm prepared.
Okay, I am.
I don't see anybody's resume to be a better, I'm, I'm prepared.
Okay, so you're prepared, okay, all right.
And my resistance is not that they're not the best company out there that can do this, I'm just saying, I, I don't know that consider, I mean, I don't know that we need the absolute best team in the country to analyze what is not the first time that PPP has been done, right? In other words, this is not new and novel territory, I just, I just want to make sure price versus rating, et cetera. I mean, the total price was what?
For this phase of 176,000.
Right.
And then there would be some additional.
Right.
Cost penalty, how many trips they, they make.
And the other thing I, we need to confirm is that they don't mind actually coming here because.
They said they don't.
I know, I saw it, but.
From the last I got.
I'll tell you, I think we, we made some comment, didn't we ask them about, maybe we would like to do some Zoom to try to keep some of that travel down, but they.
We'll, we'll come to you.
But their suggestion was, no, we like to, we like to come see our folk we're working for.
Well, good, that's, that's.
Because they've got an office, right?
Virginia Beach?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there any more questions regarding this? If not, I'll ask the board for a recommendation in the form of a motion.
I move to approve the proposal.
A motion?
I'll second it.
A motion to second, any further discussion?
Regardless of the way the motion goes, I still would like the information that I requested, please.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, case something goes, not that.
Can they spell Nats Island?
They got an office every night.
All right, so, any, any other, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries, okay, we'll move forward with that. Second item on our new business is the resolution of the Board of Commissioners supporting enactment of HR 1154 to study the feasibility of creating the Great Dismal Swamp National Heritage Area.
Mr. Chairman, this is a matter that actually came to the board a couple of, a few years ago from Congressman Murphy's office and at that time Commissioner Owen Etheridge asked the question before the county endorsed the study of whether a national heritage area would be appropriate for the Dismal Swamp and including some of Currituck County. What kind of impact would, would such a designation have on property rights and the individual, and right of individuals to use their property as they see fit? And so, we, I don't think we ever got a response back and the matter just kind of died. And then I've, I've received calls from US Senator Richard Burr's office recently asking, what does Currituck's view on this? And as included in your agenda package, Camden, Pasquetank, and Gates County, which would be part of the study area, have already signed on and said that they would be supportive of this legislation that's now pending before the United States Senate, it's already passed Congress, that would authorize a, a study of, to determine whether it is suitable and feasible for the Great Dismal Swamp area to be designated a national heritage area, which evidently allows for some tourism and other economic benefits. I did talk with Senator Burr's aide about the concern the county had had before that there not be any impact on private property rights. You, you saw in some of the literature that was included in your agenda package that it does not have any impact on private property rights. The National Park Service, for example, will not actually take any over any control or ownership or responsibility for the area. And just interestingly, I looked on the internet one day to say, where are these national heritage area act, national heritage areas in, in the United States? Well, the entire state of Tennessee is one for Civil War National Heritage Area. So, so as Mr. Boll in the Senator Burr's office said, well, I, I don't think there's much concern about taking away people's property rights if Tennessee allow for its entire state to be a national heritage area. So, the resolution before you would be the county's indication and support of a study, of this legislation that if adopted, will require the Secretary of the Interior to conduct a study to determine, again, the suitability and feasibility of, of creating the Great Dismal Swamp National Heritage Area.
And in the resolution, it says that it will not affect private property rights.
Yes.
Any other discussions, questions?
Interestingly, a national heritage area is a public-private partnership.
Well, that, that is true, they, they do speak about the public-private partnership.
Okay, now we're going to do the wave, starting with you, Kitty.
Kitty, you start the wave.
All right, any further discussion? If not, I can ask the board then for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion on the second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, the next item on our new business, item C, travel approval for Commissioners Mary Etheridge and Selena Jarvis to attend the 2022 NACO Conference in Adams County, Aurora, Colorado, July 21st through the 24th, 2022. Can I, any questions from the board on this, comments? All right, ask the board for motion.
I'm going to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I had three guys in my training in Raleigh last week, that's where they were from, from Colorado, they had to fly to Raleigh for that.
Okay, the next item is, item D is the board appointments. I guess I need a motion from the board if, to appoint all the.
Can I say something real quick before we do that? And I know, I checked with, I've asked Leanne before and I checked with Sam as well, one thing, can we get some kind of, I don't know how to say this, but just say it, like, if somebody's not, I always ask Sam, like, hey, my guy come, whatever, and I know we've had in the past where some, you know, and sometimes people miss stuff because they might, can we get like?
Attendance records?
Yeah, I mean, something like, I mean, and I, I don't want to put more work on staff because, I mean, they already have plenty to do, but like I said, I know sometimes, I've had one or two that weren't coming and attending things and, like I said, but I mean, for the most part, I think they do, I, I, but I know.
I think that's a great idea.
I mean, I think that's something where, and, and I'm not trying to say, hey, this Joe Smith or whatever, just using a random name, kick him off, you know, but I mean, like.
What's my appointment?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I don't think we should have the staff do it, but we, it's our appointment and we should call, say if it's on the Recreation Advisory Board, call Jason and say, is Joe Smith doing a good job?
Yeah, or showing up, at least, yeah.
And if he says, well, he's not showing up, and I'll say, well, out of six meetings, how many has he missed? If he says five, he does not need to be.
Be on that board, yeah, if somebody wants.
Hey, Kitty makes a good point, it's up to us to follow up on our appointments.
I always ask, I mean, I.
Us, not on the staff. I think, I think for her to just keep up with it is a job.
Yeah, I mean, I was just, I, my main thing, my main was just to make sure, and I don't know if I'm the only one where I, I mean, I'm not, I've told somebody before that's
know if I'm the only one where, I mean, I've not, I've told somebody before that's on one, hey, look, you need to start attending the meetings or I'm going to replace you.
I know, I've had a few in the past that didn't show up, yeah.
Yeah, you, because you had to replace one of yours.
I had, yeah, I mean, they don't, and you.
I just, you know.
And then you can call them and ask them if there's an issue, they may just say, you know, I can't, I need to come.
And that's what I did.
We do have staff attending these, and the staff is putting together the minutes on those.
Yes.
And.
And we should, we, staff, we should be keeping up with it as well.
Right, which they do, they do.
Well, because the ordinance provides that if a board member misses three, let's move, I'll just read it right here, three consecutive meetings in a 12-month period that's unexcused, then actually the seat is deemed to be vacated and the Board of Commissioners shall appoint someone to fill the vacancy.
And that goes along with the commissioners not attending the meetings also.
Oh, no, sorry.
I tell you, well, two of the boards, two.
You didn't see that star?
Yeah, two of the boards I'm on, they always have it the same night, I just rotate which one I go to.
Okay, all right. Okay, any further discussion of board appointments?
No, that was it, I just wanted to bring that up.
All right, so.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board, I will move to approve all of the appointees named in our agenda packet this evening.
Motion, and we have a second from Commissioner Beaumont. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. The next item is item E, our consent agenda. Do we have any discussions or comments?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any question, any further questions?